Good evening, everybody. At this time, please silence your cell phone and be advised that these proceedings are being recorded. For those physically present in the council chambers who desire to address the city council during the meeting, please complete the request to speak form available at the front entrance at the council chambers and presented to the city clerk. Speakers physically present and participating via Zoom will be called upon at an appropriate time, and each person will be allowed three minutes of speaking time. So go ahead. Call this meeting to order convene a regular meeting at city council for Tuesday, June 13, 2023, at 6:00 p.m. Divocation be given by Father Emmanuel and the pledge allegiance be given by our city attorney, Adrian. So if we could stand, and Father Emmanuel, please come to the podium.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and all gathered here. Please let us pray. Lord God, we thank you for this evening, as you have made it possible for us to gather again, to deliberate together and with one another. We welcome you in our midst, as we welcome each other in honor, love, and respect. Those who are filled with you, Lord God, speak in different languages, even as they are one. Granted with you in today's meeting, we may speak and exercise our tasks in decency and order, in wisdom and understanding, in counsel and might, with knowledge, and without fear. We thank you for uniting and watching over our city of Grand Terrace, especially in difficult times. We pray for continued health and healing and blessing for our country, the United States cities and small towns, for our leaders at all levels, and especially for our mayor and his associates. And now, Lord, we pronounce the blessings of your presence in today's meeting. We ask you to empower us in right decision-making, as we agree to honor all of your people. We give you all the honor, the glory, the thanksgiving, now and forever. Amen.
Thank you, Adrian. Okay, Madam City Clerk, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Henderson.
Present.
Councilmember Rodriguez-Robles.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Wilson.
I'm here.
Mayor Hesse.
Present.
Mayor, you have a call.
Thank you. Reordering additions or removal of items from the agenda, do we have any?
No additions or deletions.
All right. Special presentation, non-consent calendar. The following consent counter items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon the city council at one time without discussion. Any council member, staff member, or citizens may request removal of the item from the consent counter for discussion. Do we have any requests to remove any items from the consent counter for discussion? None. I'd like to entertain a motion in a second.
I'll move the consent calendar, Mayor.
All right. In a second?
Second.
Thank you. So a motion by Councilmember Allen, second by Councilmember Henderson, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Public comment. This is opportunity for members of the public to comment on any items not appearing on the regular agenda. Because of restrictions contained in California law, the city council may not discuss or act on any item not on the agenda, but may briefly respond to statements made or ask a question for clarification. The mayor may also request a brief response from staff to questions raised during the public comment, or may request the matter be agendized for future meetings. Madam City Clerk, we have any public comment?
Jordan Sapien.
Jordan Sapien, can you come to the podium?
Hello. Am I free to speak, or I don't know how this works? Sorry, I've never been here before.
Yeah, as long as your mic's on, you're good, and the light will flash when you're ready to get closer.
So am I just free to speak on the topic, or bring it up?
You can speak whatever you want about. You can talk about the weather if you want.
Thank you. So we were on vacation, and we were gone from our house. We got a notification from our sitter that a tree in our front yard had been removed without our permission. We've had this tree since we've moved in, or the people before had the tree. Big, beautiful tree, flowers every season. I guess they said, we had no warning on the tree that it was going to be removed. My father called today, and I guess a few days before as well, talked to the city manager, and the city manager said that there was a 24-hour notice on the tree. We weren't there. We were never provided that information. We never saw a notice on there if there was a tree. I'm sorry. We asked how there was a notification. How did they try getting in contact with us? They said that we posted a piece of paper on the tree. Well, we're 24 hours in advance, they put it on the tree. We don't go outside and just look out the tree every single day, even though it is on our property, but who does? Our sitter did not see the notice on the tree as well. The next day, though, the sitter came over, noticed that the tree was gone, stump, the hole was filled in. We gave no consent for the tree to be removed. I guess they said that the arborist, there's an arborist that was hired by the city that deemed the tree diseased. Now, if it was diseased, why didn't anybody talk to us and let us know in advance? We should have at least had the option to at least fix it, or at least been aware of it, instead of, oh, hey, your tree got ripped out while you guys were gone. There was no notification for us in advance, you know? So this was a shock, to say the least. And also now, the question of, if we plant another tree in that area, who's to say that the city isn't just going to rip that one out in advance, too? But it just feels like the city really overstepped with that tree. I did a post on Facebook, kind of questioning why this happened, and it turns out that a lot of people in Grand Terrace replied to this and said that the same thing kind of happened to them. Now, we had a mulberry tree, and it fruited, had fruit, and I guess they've said that they've removed other mulberry trees as well, but they don't want us to plant another mulberry. They said they wouldn't plant another mulberry tree. We want a fruited tree there.
Well, thank you. We won't really comment on this, but just, we'll let the city manager go ahead. You want to say anything about this situation?
City tree was in city right-of-way. The city removed the city's tree. We noticed it 24 hours, and we will replace the city's tree in the city right-of-way. I've talked to a gentleman, I don't know.
Okay, just sit down, sir.
This gentleman on coordinating when and where they would like to place the tree that will work for them. Typically, it takes a couple of months, but since they're attached to it, we'll get a tree replaced here in the next week or two.
Okay. So just a clarification, 12-foot from the curb is city right-of-way. If the tree, the mulberry trees are known for trip hazards on the sidewalks. Is there a sidewalk there?
No. No sidewalk, and it's...
So is the disease going to fall down? Is that what the whole thing was?
Yeah, the arborist deemed the tree is unsafe and diseased.
All right, so that's pretty...
The tree fruits every year. I apologize for that happening.
Okay, we're not here for a question-answer. I'm answering some questions now. This is not the time. So what we could do, I have office hours tomorrow from 1:00 to 3:00. You guys are welcome to come. It's a public comment right now. I'm just being courteous in answering some of the questions. Otherwise, we'll have a yelling match out here. Now, anyone of your, anybody else who want to do a public comment and speak on it for three minutes can do that. All right? I know, I understand the frustration, but if you would like to come in, I'll have office hours tomorrow, and I'll bring, excuse me, the city manager, and we could discuss it further. But this is, yes, you're not the only one this happened to, this happened to a lot of people, and Facebook is not the judge and jury on here. Unfortunately, they think it is. 92313 answers everything. It's not, but there is protocols for this, and there's a big liability for this. All right? So if you would, I'd be more than welcome. I have an open-door policy tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon from 1:00 to 3:00, and I'll bring the city manager, and we could discuss this further.
Thank you.
And I'm sorry, you know, yes, I like trees, too, and we might have to work on this, you know, far as the notification, but we could talk about it further. All right? Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anybody else?
Robert Sanchez.
Mr. Sanchez.
Good evening. First of all, I want to say thank you for the repaving of Mount Vernon and Grand Terrace Road. It looks awesome. I don't know if you guys have seen it yet. Work was done this past week. I love driving through there. I saw the traffic. There's no potholes. I want to say thank you to the city manager, and thank you to the council for addressing that issue. So thank you very much. Just here today, again, talk about the speed on Grand Terrace Road, all the way from the senior citizen past the elementary school and all the way up to Grand Terrace Road. So just hoping that the city and the city council will think about at least doing a survey on that street. There's a lot of things that are happening on there. A lot of that street has no sidewalks, and that's what kind of scares me. When I'm looking out my window and I see families walking, kids riding their bikes, I'm like, there's just a blind turn around the corner that I constantly jump out of the way when I hear cars coming, and I'm walking my dog. So hoping that's something that, in the future, the city can look into. The back of the elementary school does have speed bumps, so it'd be nice if we get something on that front of that street to slow that traffic down. But again, thank you again for hearing me out, and thank you again for the repaving of that intersection.
You're welcome, Mr. Sanchez. And I understand your pain in the speeders, because I was doing 25 miles an hour, somebody passed me in the residential, flipped me off, too, at the same time, so it's everywhere. So thank you. Anyone else?
Chuck Hornsby.
I notice this, this doesn't really affect where I live. I live on Eaton Drive, but I go up to the dog park on a regular basis, and I've always been in the habit of telling people who have trouble navigating to pay attention to the green signs. I think it'd be a great idea if the city could have some green signs made for two areas. I'm not sure the name of the street, but when you head up past the senior center, you hang a left to go to the dog park. The dog park's on one side, and the church is on the other, and if you keep going up around that curve, it curves to the right, and there's a long stretch, maybe, I don't know, 70, 80 yards, where people park, you know, because it's such a beautiful view, which is fine, you know, whether you're a young person or an older person, but there's so much litter up there, you can't believe it. It's just, it's god-awful. The other spot that's really terrible is if you, instead of turning right on Grand Terrace Road off of Mount Vernon, if you hang a left, and you go down, there's that big area where people can pull off the road, and the same thing happens there, only I think it's worse. And I noticed when I drove, I drove up from Stater Brothers on the way to the meeting, and I noticed there wasn't much litter on the street at all, and I thought, wow, that looks so much better when there's no litter. I would like the city to maybe purchase a couple of signs for those two areas. I don't know how much they are, they can't be cheap, but something, two green signs that say, "Enjoy the view, please don't litter." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Margalie Lara.
Can you push the mic closer to you? There you go.
Ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, and thank you for taking my time, and I apologize upfront, and this is not the right venue for this issue. However, I have filed a complaint with the city, and I have not gotten a response. I filed a complaint in April, and been following up with the code enforcement for animal control on April, May, a couple of times in May, and also in June. The issue here is, I have a neighbor that does not clean up her excessive feces, and it's really a health hazard. I'm really concerned that it's causing excessive flies, mosquitoes, bacteria, possibly some mold that is going to be airborne. I have family that come over, and I frankly do not want to go into my backyard. I can't open my windows. I've been speaking to the neighbors, and they also have the same issue. She came in with me. One of the neighbors came in to complain. The code enforcement was not here. I've come multiple times trying to reach them, and no response. So I'm here today to request for your assistance from the board. Something has to be done with this lady. I understand she might be trying, but the excessive feces has been in that yard for over probably two, three years. She's admitted to it. I've tried to work with her to get her to clean it, and I even paid out of my own pocket and had to have somebody go in there and pick it up. And we took out two barrels of big trash cans of feces, and it's absolutely ridiculous, and I just cannot stand this anymore. I've been working with her, well, I asked the neighbor, since June of 2022. In August, we went in there to clean it, and now it's almost a year later, and it's absolutely horrendous, the smell. As the summertime comes up, it gets worse, and she tells me that the sun is going to just, you know, dry it out. And again, I'm very concerned, because I'm starting to cough, it burns my nose from the ammonia, and I don't know what, well, the lady said, Leila said she would reach out to her higher superior to go into the home and find out what the status is, or help clean it up, because she's disabled and apparently cannot pick it up. So I do need some assistance from you, please. It's, I really think...
Can you give the city manager the address, and he'll write it down?
Yes. Thank you very much. That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Carolina Vicente.
My name is Carolina Vicente. I'm here on behalf of Tern Behavioral Services and the Grand Terrace Community Coalition for Change. So we wanted to take this time to invite the community for our upcoming forum taking place tomorrow, here at the community room at City Hall. So we will be sharing information about our smoke-free Grand Terrace campaign. We'll also be having a couple panelists that are here, this space right now, and we'll also be having light refreshments. So we just wanted to take this time to just invite community, and I know council member has a flyer as well, so, yeah, community is welcome to join us tomorrow. We'll be at the community room at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you very much for the invite.
Yeah, thank you.
Deborah, I think we got one more. He's filling out up there. Do we have any more?
No, I do not have any more speakers.
Yeah, we have one. He just got through filling it out. Yes, bring it down here, sir.
Are we ready?
Yeah, go ahead.
I was originally here for the tree issue, but my other concern is the paving of my street. The city stopped across the street from me a couple, few years ago. I inquired a couple of years ago, they said next summer.
Sir, what's your name and where do you live?
My name is Steve Morgan. I live on Minona Drive.
Okay. All right, go ahead.
And I was wondering if you're ever going to pave that street. We've got all kinds of potholes, and it's beat up. That's my concern.
Okay, well, we're on a paving schedule.
Okay.
And it will eventually get there. You're not the only street, so we are on a paving schedule, and it will be done. So it's just a matter, when that street's on there, we have, do we have a copy of the schedules?
I'd like to ask the...
That street is not on the CIP yet.
Okay, so...
Our plan is we're paving arterials and main streets first, and then residential and secondary streets afterwards, so...
So we could look and see what the pothole situation is over there?
Yeah, we can look at the potholes.
Okay. All right. But it will be eventually on there.
So that's it? There's no estimation of when, or anything like that?
We're limited funds in our city, and we try to take care of the main things, and we get to it, we'll get to it, it's just a matter of time. I know that's not what you wanted to hear, but, you know...
Thank you for your time.
My street's the same way, sir, so... All right. Anybody else before I close it?
No, sir.
All right, go on, close public comment. Public hearing, non unfinished business, none. New business, item 11. Allow expansion membership to the Historical and Cultural Activities Committee to the surrounding cities. Deborah?
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem, members of council, Deborah Thomas, city clerk. This staff report supports goal number four, develop and implement successful partnerships. Steph has had a request made by the Historical and Cultural Committee requesting allowing expansion of its membership to the Historical Committee and allowing surrounding cities' individuals being able to participate. A little bit of background, the Historical and Cultural Committee is a seven-member committee. Back in May of 2021, all of the committee resigned at the same time, and we took a couple months to recruit a full body again. Over the years from 2021 to today, we've had several members come and go. We were down to three members. We are back up to five. We do have several, one or two that cannot always participate in the events or help out as much as they would like. On June 5th, the Historical and Cultural Committee had a discussion, and they asked that staff come back to the city council, asking if there was possibility that we could waive the residential membership to some surround, and open it up to surrounding cities. Apparently, there has been some interest from one or two individuals already that live close by. Their family and friends participate in Grand Terrace activities quite frequently, and also participate, I believe, in the Lions Club locally, and also with the Chamber of Commerce. So with that being said, recommendation at this time is that the city council allow its Historical and Cultural Activities Committee members to assist in recruiting community members from surrounding cities to increase its membership. Right now, they're just struggling with handling the workload, so they would like to get that full body back, and we're just having a really difficult time recruiting from within. That is my staff report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Does the council have any questions? Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Madam City Clerk. What is the workload of the Historical and Cultural Committee?
When they hold their art show, they host a paint and sip, they provide food, set-up, hanging the artwork, recruiting artists to participate in the show itself, a little bit of cleanup as well, going out shopping for the event, going to the county to get their license for their ABC license for their paint and sip, collecting the donations, collecting, just going out to the businesses, asking them to support that particular event as well, getting donations. In addition to that, they have their country fair every year. They recruit many people to participate in that as well, set up, donations, traveling around. Now, some of these individuals work, obviously, during the day, so they have to do it on the weekends or at night, so they're just having some additional help is something that they're requesting.
Has any of the, thanks for that, in-depth, so has any of the activities suffered from the lack of membership? I mean, five can get, five's an odd number, and that's what you need to get the voting done, for if anything, voting needs to be done. Has any event or anything suffered from the lack of having seven members?
I don't know if it's necessarily that the event has suffered, but I think the volunteers themselves are exhausted at times, but they really are ambitious, and they would love to keep this going. They're just a little overwhelmed, and a couple extra set of hands at these events would be very helpful.
And have we, have we done a very diligent, have we diligently had a recruiting effort going on, like website, front page, on the homepage, and in the city news, and that sort of thing?
We've used every...
To try to, you know, and word of mouth, all that stuff on social media?
We have used, we have used every social media that we have. We have used the GT News periodically. We don't do it every week, but we do periodically repost on that. It's on the website as well. It's under news and information on our website. In addition to that, it's on Twitter, it's on Facebook. We have our members who have tried recruiting themselves here. We've had a couple people who applied and pulled out at the last minute. It's just a request that they had. They really would like to see if they can increase that membership so that it can help them with their events.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So question, well, like Councilmember Allen, because I don't know, have we reached out to the schools, too, the high schools? Is there an age limit on this, or minimum age?
We don't have an age limit on the Historical and Cultural Committee. That one, we were actually, I believe at one time, we're focusing more on the youth for the Park and Rec Committee. That was really difficult, because unfortunately, we've heard no response, even after multiple telephone calls to various members at the high school. I don't, I mean, obviously, they're busy, and maybe they don't have time for that. I can't really answer the question as to why we're not getting calls back.
Now, if we do have residents from other cities, is this going to have to meet, I mean, the residents know this is just for Grand Terrace, a special event, or are they going to want to do joint ventures on this, on their cities, other areas?
I can't really answer that question at this time. I'm not really sure what they're, I don't know if it was necessarily the goal of this committee to partner with another city for their events, because I think that would overextend them, obviously, above and beyond.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, they were just, it was more just for their committee, for Grand Terrace events, the ones that they host.
City Attorney?
Mr. Mayor, what I would conclude is that if it is a commission of the city, it would be a focus of Grand Terrace and its, and its goals and objectives. Where I have seen it, where cities have utilized residents from other communities, is really just to get more of a broader input on an issue. I've seen it like on arts and arts types of commissions, as well as business development types of commissions, where they want to see viewpoints from other residents, other businesses outside of the community. But again, the focus of the commission would be solely on Grand Terrace, and I think, again, the benefit, they would likely be, well, I don't want to speak on that, but they would likely solely be addressing Grand Terrace issues. And we would, I would recommend putting that in a resolution to make sure that that's clarified.
All right. So before we go into deliberation, we have any public comments on this item?
No, no, Mayor, we do not.
All right. Anybody like to deliberate on this, or bring it, Ken?
My concern regarding the recommendation is the precedent it would appear to be setting. We have the Planning Commission and the Park and Rec Commission, and we have the Historical and Cultural Advisory Committee. The committee already has seven slots, so to speak, assigned to it, whereas Park and Rec and Planning are five-member commissions. My other concern is, it's not clear to me that if a new member came from Colton or Loma Linda, or a neighboring unincorporated community, that that would solve the problem of attendance or long-term membership, at least since the city clerk... At least since the City Clerk has been the primary staff person to this committee, uh, it has done a really good job. It has, um, maybe been, uh, a little bit more ambitious than resources would allow for activities associated with, um, the events that it brings about. I'm not, at this point at least, inclined to support the recommendation, uh, be interesting to hear from my colleagues, uh, my mind is not closed on it, but, uh, I'm not sure that uh, expanding the committee from Grand Terrace residents to surrounding communities, um, is the, is the solution that would not only take care of the problem, but it might create some issues that are, that are not, uh, apparent to us at this point in time. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, anybody else? All right, that, Councilman Henderson brought up a good point, so the, um, Historical Society since, you know, ever since I've been here, has been the art show, right, and then, um, the Harvest Festival?
And then, and then the city birthday.
And the what?
The city birthday.
And the city birthday, so three events, and they're not adding any events, right, that was just the main three?
No, just those three.
Okay. All right, so anybody else have any comments or questions? Uh, Councilor Robles?
Well, I would think, um, on this committee, it's not a, uh, I don't know what the right word would be, but it's not a statutory committee where it's, um, we delegate any powers that are legislative, like the Planning Commission or anything like that, so I don't have a concern about that, but I do wonder, and I support this thing, but I do wonder at some point, maybe we should have a Parks and Recreation Commission and combine, uh, these efforts instead of, we're always dealing with attrition on both. So that's just my, my only, uh, viewpoint on that, thank you.
That's a pretty good idea.
So what, uh, Councilmember Henderson, um, mentioned in the, in his comments is, was my concern also, I don't see this as a i- if, if, if there's this ongoing, if there's a real need for this seven-member commission to be seven members, I don't see this as the long-term solution if this, uh, if the desire of those wanting to participate is is for, you know, family members in school or something like that where, you know, family, you know, perhaps family members who participate or who attend our schools in our city now, you know, those students, you know, who, um, are participating, uh, who go to the schools in our city but don't live in our city and they participate in events in our city, but once those students leave those schools, then will those family members who have served on that committee still want to be on that committee? You know, here we would be back to trying to replace them again. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. So I understand why they probably want seven, just because, you know, throw it out there, I mean, we don't want burnout, you know, so.
The membership is seven based on resolutions, so they do have seven, they're just just having difficulty, um.
They have a difficulty time. So there's seven on there right now?
No, we only have five.
Five, and they want two more, but they can't find anybody.
Yeah, the resolution calls for seven, so we, they they would like to have that full seven, we're just have, they're having difficulty maintaining, um, individuals to stay on that committee.
Can we combine Parks and Recs with the Historical?
We don't have an agenda for it.
I mean, it, we can, if if that, if the council would like to do something like that, that probably would be very helpful, because then Parks and Rec does participate in several of the events.
Yeah, I see all the Parks and Recs there when they do it.
That the Historical and Cultural Committee, um, put on.
Okay.
So, so it is a consideration.
City Attorney?
Yeah, really briefly, going back to Councilmember Robles's, uh, comments, she's correct, this is not a commission that is, uh, required by statute, is a commission that is created, uh, by the discretion of the City Council, so if the council wants to combine it, or change the composition, the number of members, that's solely within the discretion of the council.
All right, Councilor Henderson?
I think, uh, Councilmember Robles's suggestion is an excellent one and, uh, it's something that I would hope, um, staff would be able to evaluate on behalf of the City Council and come back later with a report on combining, at least in concept, the, uh, the two committees, Park and Rec and, uh, Cultural, Historical and Cultural Advisory. Not typically, but in many cities, the Historical and Cultural Advisory function is handled by, um, staff of the Park and Rec and Recreation Department and, um, volunteers that are, uh, secured by the Park and Rec Department, so if we were to at least evaluate the pros and cons of something like that, it it would not be, uh, out of the ordinary in that purpose, and I think we have an active, uh, Park and Rec Committee and we have diligent and dedicated, uh, cultural advisory resources available to us and maybe the combination of the two is the answer, uh, to the issues brought up by the City Clerk and we would then be, um, we'd have the advantage of all of the participants being Grand Terrace citizens. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so we just wanna bring it back to, is that what we want to do, Councilman Allen, you have a question?
I didn't have a question, I was gonna make a motion.
And he was gonna make a motion.
Yeah, I was gonna make, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Ken, Ken, go ahead and make the motion in.
My recommendation to the council is that the, uh, suggestion made by Councilmember Robles be, uh, assigned to the City Manager and staff and that a report be brought back, um, at, by the City Manager's determination, but at the earliest possible convenience.
I would, uh, second that, um, but I would add something with, uh, we have to do something with what we, what is in front of us right now.
Yeah, we're not acting on it.
Are we, uh, is that added to your motion?
So we're, I'm sorry, hold on, we're just gonna.
Yeah, no action has to be taken.
Okay.
On the.
We're just gonna do what the recommendations, look into, see if we can combine both of the assets and see how that works, is that what we're doing?
I'll still second, uh, Councilmember Henderson's motion.
Yes, I, I think.
Do we need a vote or you just go as staff or, uh, council?
Since the motion has been made and seconded, I would recommend we just go through with the vote.
Anything else before we cast a vote? All right, go ahead and cast.
Motion passes with Councilmembers Henderson, Allen, and Robles voting yes, Mayor Hesse voting yes, Mayor Protem listening both no.
All right, well, thank you. Um, item 12, first reading of the ordinance amending municipal code 15.18.010, adoption of the California Fire Code. Luis, building official.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, uh, Councilmembers, Luis Cardea, um, building official. Uh, so tonight, uh, we will, I'll provide a presentation for the updates to the 2022 California Fire Code, which is the codes that the city usually enforces for all buildings and construction. Also, after the presentation, we do have another presentation, uh, we do have, uh, one of our fire marshals present this evening and they will be providing a presentation as well, um, related to the, uh, updates of the California Fire Code. So tonight, uh, we're doing the first reading of an ordinance amending the City Fire Code. The updates to the Fire Code, um, are in compliance with items number two and three of revision goals, which is to maintain public safety and item number three, which is to promote economic development by updating the zoning and development codes. So a little background, uh, the City of Grand Terrace currently enforces a 2019 California Fire Code as amended and provided by the San Bernardino County Fire Protection Ordinance, number 20 dash 01. Every three years, the California Building Codes, including the Fire Codes, are updated, uh, as we saw before, a few months ago, with the Building Codes, same applies with the Fire Codes, every three years, uh, they get updated. Updates are recommended by, uh, external agencies, which are typically professional agencies, including the International Code Council, known as the ICC, National Fire Protection Association, the NFPA, California Building Standards Commission, and the, any local amendments, uh, as we see with the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District. City Grand Terrace currently contrasts with the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District to provide fire prevention and engineering services. Usually that includes review of, uh, fire alarm plans, fire sprinkler plans, any requirements, any plans that need to be, uh, reviewed by a fire marshal. Earlier this year, uh, the Board of Directors for the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District, SBC FPD, adopted ordinance number FPD 23 dash 01, county ordinance which adopts by reference the 2022 edition of the California Fire Code along with certain amendments. An amendment to the municipal code, more specifically 15 dash 18 dash 01, 010, repealing the 2019 California Fire Code and FPD 20 dash 01, whilst adopting the 2022 California Fire Code as amended by FPD 23 dash 01, must take place in order for the city to be, uh, adopting and enforcing the most up-to-date for, uh, Fire Codes. Based on the, upon the foregoing, staff recommends that the City Council introduce for a first public reading, with further reading, waive, and amendment to municipal code section 15 point 18 point 010, repealing the 2019 California Fire Code and FPD 20 dash 01, while also adopting the 2022 California Fire Code and FPD ordinance 23 dash 01 in their entirety. There will be no fiscal impact, however, by enforcing and adopting the most updated Fire Codes, residents and businesses will save hundreds of thousands of dollars in monetary loss caused by fires, including any indirect costs that are associated with such incidents. Unfortunately, that usually means, uh, fires, so, uh, less impact on having to go to insurance because of fires, so there will be a significant savings. Safety impact, the proposed amendment will continue maintaining life safety by preventing fires in occupied buildings. So very similar, uh, to our ordinance that we had adopted a few months ago, requiring fire sprinklers in all structures in the city. And that's it for my end, and then, uh, we have our fire marshal for presentation.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers, my name is Monica Ronchetti and I am the Fire Marshal for San Bernardino County Fire Protection District and I'm going to just give you a summary of the 2022 California Fire Code adoption as amended by San Bernardino County Fire Protection District Ordinance number 23 0 dash 1. The State Building Standards Commission publishes the California Fire Code every three years, it contains regulations that pertain to fire-safe building standards, it becomes effective throughout California 180 days after publication and the San Bernardino County Fire Protection Ordinance 23 dash 01 was adopted as amended on February 20th, 2023 by the Board of Directors of the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District. After adoption, cities must ratify the ordinance through an official action for it to become effective. Pursuant to the Health and Safety Code, section 13869, the San Bernardino County Fire Protection District may adopt by reference the 2022 edition of the California Fire Code and may also make local amendments as necessary based on local climatic, geological, and/or topographical conditions. Significant amendments to the 2022 edition of the California Fire Code that are included in the adopted ordinance based on the local climatic, geological, and/or topographical conditions include additional operational permits, uh, many of these are a carryover from the 2019 ordinance. So the additional, uh, operational permits include battery storage, commercial cooking operations, commercial storage of pallets. Additional construction permits include electrified security fences, plant extraction systems, smoke control exhaust systems, refrigeration systems, and dust collection systems. And it also includes the guidance on the minimum specifications of road width services, grades, et cetera, to allow various types of fire vehicles to safely access roads, which is also a carryover from the 2019 ordinance. It updates the mandate mandated font size of a building address as visible from the street based on the size of the building, also a carryover. Clarified requirements regarding water flow when building a structure and the spacing of fire hydrants in commercial, industrial, and multifamily developments. This is also a carryover from 2019. And it updates the requirements for fire sprinkler systems for buildings of 5,000 square feet or greater, also a carryover. And, uh, it amends requirements stating emergency responder radio coverage must be installed in existing warehouse buildings where dispatch radios are unable to communicate. If radios can communicate within the warehouse, separately installed radio coverage is not required. Amended, it amended the storage height limit of compost and biomass from 25 to 12 feet at commercial facilities, which allows for more efficient fire suppression activities using fire, excuse me, fire engines. And that is the end, any questions?
Council have any question, Councilmember Henderson?
Uh, my question is to Luis or Ms. Ronchetti. I, uh, tried to review what the, the staff report and it, uh, cured my insomnia, so forgive me for these questions. My first question is, is there a, I couldn't find it, is there a recommended length for cul-de-sacs? And the second is, is there a dual access requirement, uh, on any structure, proposed structure that, uh, would be imposed upon the developer?
I'm, I'm gonna bring up our fire prevention specialists, who can answer that?
Hello, my name's, uh, Zerodvar and I'm actually one of the plan specialists that actually verify, uh, when the plants in the middle come in. Um, so double access is actually typically required on all commercial vehicles. Residential, it's typically one with the exception of 35 units or more, uh, but it's you, we typically try to base, um, review it on a base, case-by-case basis. If, uh, limitations are, if access is limited, we can always work with, um, the person applying for the permit, uh, however, like I said, dual access typically is required on any commercial properties. And if you can, uh, repeat the first question?
The last city I, I worked for had a 660-foot length minimum requirement for cul-de-sac and a turnaround, uh, requirement for fire engines. I was wondering if something like that was included in the, uh, proposed fire regulations?
That would not be in the ordinance, however, that would be within our standards. Um, so we do require, um, it will determine way, based on the area that it, that the development is going in and especially, it's typically 600 feet, however, for a wildland urban interface area, it's reduced down to about 350 feet.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Well, thank you for your report. Do we have any public comment?
No, Mayor, we do not.
Uh, staff like to discuss anything on this, any discussions? No, pretty s- pretty point blank, all right. Before we do a vote, do we, City Attorney, we need you to, uh, read the whole ordinance?
Uh, yes, I'll read it after, assuming there's a motion in a second.
Okay, so do we have a motion and a?
Second.
Second.
So we have a motion by Councilmember Robles, second by Councilman Allen, so.
So the title of the ordinance is as follows, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Grand Terrace, California, adopting by reference the 2022 California Fire Code as amended by San Bernardino County Fire Protection District Ordinance number 23 dash 01 and repealing and replacing Grand Terrace Municipal Code, chapter 15 point 18 in its entirety to incorporate the new code as amended. Madam City Clerk, may we have a? Madam City Clerk, may we have a vote?
All right, so please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming out here tonight. All right, Item H, Request for Future Agenda Items by City Council. Under this section in pursuit of the requirements of the Brown Act, no items may be considered other than listed below. Our request is, Councilmember Allen provides some description information on item number one and asks for a brief council discussion. One, consider renaming the city's dog park after Grand Terrace resident Ann Wade Hornsby? Is that it? So Councilmember Allen, you want to tell us what you want, why you want to bring this to agenda?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. I'd like to, I remember that the very first council meeting that I ever attended after becoming a resident of Grand Terrace was way more than 20 years ago, more than 20 years ago, and it was on Brentwood Street. It was a special meeting that the city council had called outdoors, you know, being outside, and the issue that was that the residents of Brentwood Street wanted to have speed humps and stop signs where the children cross the street to go into the back entrance at Terrace View. So all the residents of Brentwood Street had been petitioning the council, and they agreed to have a meeting out there on the street to look it over. All the council members and the mayor showed up, and we were there, and that's where I met Ms. Wade Hornsby and Wade Hornsby and her husband. And that's where I, I remember all the, we were all concerned about the safety of the children, that's where she is, a teacher in our school system, but she said, you know, we don't have children, but we have dogs. And that, and she said, those are our children. And she was a really strong, along with her husband, she was a big supporter of the, of the petition drive and the effort to get the Grand Terrace Dog Park built. It was a real team effort, and she was a real active team member in that, and she didn't give up afterwards. I mean, she and I remained friends for many years up until her passing, and we were often together, and she was often badgering me about the city's upkeep of the dog park and ways we can make it better, or ways we can keep it nice, and have, she was so proud of it and loved it so much for the residents, and I just think that, you know, she was a real animal lover, she worked real hard to get that park established and to keep it nice and to keep it for our residents and for, for our city, and it's the only park we have that doesn't really have a name. And so I just thought that this would be an appropriate time and appropriate person to fill that empty slot. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, so do we have any motion, a second, to bring this item to agenda?
I just have a comment.
Comment from Councilmember Rolles?
I'm pretty sure, the reason we named Pico Park to Veterans Park, we, I, there were a number of issues where cities around us had to rename parks because people had gone to prison for violations of holding their office. So I think we need to dig that up, what our policy is. Other than that, I don't, I don't mind having a discussion.
Yeah, and that's what this whole thing, to bring the discussion forward so we could discuss about what the protocol is, so. If you want to move forward, Councilmember Henderson?
Are you looking for a motion, Mr. Mayor?
I'm looking for a motion, a second, so we get either bring this forward so we could discuss what's going on.
Is my effort a motion?
Okay, your effort's a motion, so I'm looking for a second.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Allen, a second by Councilmember Henderson, please vote.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. So city communication, Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. President John F. Kennedy said, "Victory has a thousand fathers, and failure is an orphan." When I was a fledging redevelopment official, I attended a conference where the former mayor of Los Angeles, Tom Bradley, spoke. And the one thing he said that stuck with me over the years is that you can get a lot done if you don't worry about who gets the credit. So I say all that to say this, we had a wonderful community day this past weekend, and fortunately, none of the organizers, supporters, and vendors were orphans as defined by President Kennedy. And I'm happy to say that. It's, I and some of my colleagues participated in the community day festivities. At least in my recent memory, it was probably the most successful event that I've attended, and it was, I think, a really good reflection of Grand Terrace as a community. If I start mentioning names, I'm going to leave some out, and I apologize for that because, but there are just a couple people or a couple organizations that deserve to be called out in this context. The Lions Club and Ed Drew, our Planning Commission Chair, who organized the car show, which is near and dear to my heart for obvious reasons. Johan Gallo, who organized the crews, among other things, and is the kind of a catch-all when it comes to anything automotive, and so we really appreciate his efforts. Christine Valdivia Phelps, the primary recruiter for the vendors that showed up in great numbers. The Lions Club as a whole, city staff, volunteers, and the person who should get credit, but normally would only be mentioned if there was discredit to be assigned, and that's City Manager Konrad Bolowich. So I want to make mention of that, because these things, if you know anything about event planning, the attention to detail, when things go smoothly, it appears to, to manage itself. But there's attention to detail, significant attention to detail to make these events successful, so I want to compliment those that I've already mentioned, and I want to compliment city staff for organizing a wonderful event, and hope that this is the first of many to come since we're contemplating a slight date change in, in the future to, so that we don't have conflicts with other major events throughout the Ellen Empire. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that concludes my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. Councilmember Allen?
Thanks, Mayor. I want to go back to, in between the, since the last meeting, we had, we had the Memorial Day event at the Veterans Wall of Freedom here in Grand Terrace, and that was another great event that put together by the folks, our great volunteers. Thanks to the GT Foundation, the Grand Terrace Foundation for helping out with that, Renee and her crew did a great job with that Memorial Day ceremony, and Shad Bowl, and, and all those who are part of that committee. I thank them for it, on behalf of all the veterans and their families. I also attended the, the second Stop the Bleed training. Mayor, you were telling me about the one you went to, and I went to the one the following month that we had last week. It was, it was really great training, learning about the Stop the Bleed program and how it works, and, and so I'm looking forward to more and more of these as our city progresses. I know there's a couple of venues that are trying to get this incorporated into their actual things that, the Gun Shop Get Loaded wants to put it in their Responsible Gun Owners Program, and I think that's an amazing thing, and, and the Lions Club and Chamber of Commerce are both looking at how they can help out in spreading this program around the city. So I'm glad about that. I also, on June the 2nd, I went to, I was invited to and went to this Energy Summit, and there was quite a few folks from leadership of the various cities around the Ellen Empire in both Riverside and San Bernardino County. And this was about community choice aggregate electoral distribution programs. And it's really interesting, there's probably about at least a dozen of these community choice aggregates in our local area, and all of the folks who are serviced by those aggregates have rates that are comparable or a little bit cheaper than what Edison charges. So I think maybe it's something that we could look into and have a discussion about at a later date, because there's, yeah, it's, it was pretty interesting. And so, and I'd like to echo Councilmember Henderson, I was at the Community Day also with, with him and with you and the mayor, Pro Tim, and it was a great day, it was a great event, and I just think that each year, our, our foundation and our volunteers with the Parks and, with Historical and Culture Committee and Parks and Rec, each year, things just get better and better in this city with what the events that they host and put on. I'm, I'm looking forward to the Harvest Feast, I'm looking forward to light up Grand Terrace, and next year, the Community Days, I'm really excited because I'm hoping that we can incorporate a parade. That would be, that would be great. Last thing I want to do is I want to mention that tomorrow, as usual, second Wednesday of every month, at 8:00 a.m. at Woody's, Chamber of Commerce meeting, and also tomorrow is Flag Day, so if you see a bunch of flags on display around the city, that's why, because tomorrow's the national, the Flag Day. And then June 19th is Juneteenth. I'd like to wish everyone a happy Juneteenth. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. Councilmember Rolles?
I didn't attend Community Days, but I was about 45 miles away, and when I saw how nice the weather was, I go, finally, some nice weather for Community Days. We have been burned out most years, just dying in the heat. So, you know, I understand from my colleagues, it was wonderful, and I thank staff and all the volunteers for providing that for our community. I'm sure we, we all had a thirst for it after being locked up for a number of years. I attended the Southern California Associated Governments Committee that I'm on, Community Economic and Human Development, and we're still getting these presentations from cities called the 15 Minute Cities, and that's where cities are trying to do where you could abandon your car within a radius, and people could get around and do their comrades for the day. I'm going to have to get off my laziness and get, and maybe put it on the website so folks can see what, what those concepts are. Then on the 7th, I attended the San Bernardino County Transportation Agency meeting, and we renewed the contract for our legal counsel and for our director, who has informed us that this is, the last two years he will be with us. The, other than routine things, Mount Vernon Bridge, I don't know how many people travel that, but we had some issues with the railroad, with what they had to do on the ground floor, and that delayed the project considerably, and we still had, were informed of those delays, even though they finished their planning, they didn't want to move off the horizon of October before we can go in there and start doing work. Then we had the contractor say they couldn't perform the work, so we got a new one, and staff was sounding very positive about getting that bridge back up. Also, I know I didn't ask for this to be put on the agenda, but if it needs to be on the agenda for the future, Pat Henojaosa passed away. She grew up in San Bernardino, we're the same age, days apart, and I didn't meet her until maybe a couple of years ago. Her family were prominent small business owners in the Mount Vernon, San Bernardino area, and they moved their business to San Bernardino, to Grand Terrace for a while, and it was called Jimmy's Carnitas, and all this Hispanic folk would use them for our weddings and big banquets, a lot of good memories. Pat had distinguished herself by considerable amount of public service, and she was known for her beauty. She had won a couple of pageants, I think Ms. GI Forum was one of them, and I can't remember the other. But I want to, her grandchildren and her family expressed, you know, my deepest condolences. I know this is an incredible loss, and I also want to extend my condolences to Mr. Hornsby. You know, you both have, you and your family have been an absolute treasure for this community. You guys have stood up and been vocal and made sure that this community stays a nice place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to echo about the Memorial Day celebration. In, in my opinion, it is one of the, one of the greatest assets that we have in the city, and I know my grandfather's name is on that, barely fit on there by the time I got done stretching it out, but it is a spiritual experience for me every time we get together to celebrate the sacrifice of those who have gone before us. Grand Terrace Community Days, I've been here for 43 years, and I can tell you that this really went streamlined. Everything went just like the way it was supposed to go, and the only thing I can see that we might be able to kind of move up from here is maybe some more youth things, more youth-oriented activities. We had plenty of vendors, we had the car show, we had a great band, and somebody said they saw me rocking out in front of the band. I don't do rockouts, but, you know, it's the spirit of the thing. But, but maybe some other youth activities, and I agree wholeheartedly with bringing back the parade. One other thing that I would just like to bring up, just kind of a FYI, I don't know if the most of the citizens in the city realize that the courtesy notice that they received, in other words, when a truck drops by, drops a courtesy notice on their, on their doorknob about a week and a half before their water bill is due, they get charged $35. They get whacked for 35 bucks for that notice. Because the Riverside Highland Water Company is a private company, it has bylaws, and so I intend to pursue the, an investigation of those bylaws to determine whether or not that is just a company, company policy that's been enacted or what it is, but I know this body does not get to do anything that involves money past a certain point to, without some kind of a consensus. And if it is something that has happened over time where a courtesy notice evolved into a money-making promise or a money-making presentation, then I think we've got the wrong game going. And we do a lot of things with Riverside Highland Water Company, and it's been our intention to improve our, you know, position with them, because realistically, they are on, you know, in public documents that say that they are the representative for Grand Terrace. So if that's the case, then we're kind of at least half-pregnant or half-guilt in there somewhere if we don't pay attention to what's going on. I'm looking forward to our priorities meeting, and that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim. Yes, a lot of things been happening since the last council meeting, but, you know, I just want to bring up one thing, and I understand, you know, because I was a citizen going against the school board, and it can be when the public comment, you're wondering a lot of things like, why, why can't I get anything resolved and stuff, and why don't they take care of it right now? So there's certain protocols in it, and when we do bring it like up just for clarification, it's because we're trying to help you, but it could be confusing, that we have certain laws and guidelines to follow, and if the issue does require future agenda, we have to bring it. And if the issue does require future agenda, we have to bring it back to the body for discussion and vote, just in case it has caused, costs money. And, and believe me, you know, it's, there's reasons why trees are cut down, there's a reason why some of the roads aren't done yet. So it's just patience. Like I said, I have open door office hours every Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00. We could discuss it, but if something needs an agenda, we'll bring it back to the council. So it's not like it's, anything's going on deaf ears when we do public comment. We do listen to it. The city manager does take notes. And if it's something that's an easy fix and stuff, that does need to be, because I dare hear a couple of comments that need attention right away, and, and he takes care of it. So on that, on the veterans, they got a thanking note from the Women's Club, and that's where everybody is thanking for finding a new home for their plaque and for refurbishing it. The city maintenance crew, the direction of Conrad, they remainten, was it bronze? Yeah, bronze plaque that was dedicated for POW from back in 1973, a freedom tree and a community center that's being a beta right now for asbestos, right? So they wanted a permanent home, and the, the city staff did a beautiful job on a permanent home for that plaque. And you see it right when you come in. So that gentleman, the name escapes me right now, but there's a home to remember him and all POWs who served our country. So thank you, Women's Club. And beautiful ceremony for Memorial Day and, you know, once again, you know, it's, it's a humbling experience and Memorial Days to recognize our war dead and honor them and other families for the sacrifices that they made too. And we had Supervisor Dawn Rowell there, who, her husband made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. So great event, great way to honor our men and women. Grand Terrace Days, you know, like, it wasn't, the weather, we couldn't ask for any better weather. Thank God it didn't rain Saturday, because I know the car guys probably wouldn't be there. It rained Sunday. But all those nice cars, and it makes me a little jealous. I think we should have a mayor and councilmember car for, so we can enter and stuff. I don't know. But, but, yeah, not the donkey with the cart. I don't know, I probably wouldn't be able to afford that. But, but it was beautiful, beautiful event. You know, just like, I don't want to leave anybody out, man. This is, that's what makes Grand Terrace great. All the volunteers, everybody putting their foot forward to make it a beautiful day. And a day for remembering, you know, for kids, you know, to remember that. And I agree with Mayor Pro Tem, you know, we, maybe we need a little bit more, you know, I know they did a water balloon toss and some other stuff, and I think they were going to do a watermelon eating contest, but I think it kind of got late and, and, but, you know, bring some of those carnival-like events for these kids and stuff. I know that each booth, but if, I walked around each booth and very informative and shout out for one booth, the Hartz Committee for the Foundation, they're collecting shoes, well, they're doing a shoe drive for foster kids, so by the school year. So they're a local Grand Terrace and nonprofit, so if there's a need for boys and girls who are foster kids that need shoes for the upcoming school year, so if you want to donate, it's a great cause. But yeah, thank you for all our sponsors, for everything. And the city staff, you know, taking time out from your families. And our first responders coming out there. You know, the sheriff showing off the boat and saying the fire department doesn't have a boat, I don't know what's up with that, but it's a nice boat. I think we should organize a community fishing event on that boat, so maybe we can get by with that. I did meet with Assemblymember Savantos, and I hand over that report that we gave to Senator Rock. And we, very receptive. She said she wants to be more active with our city, great staff there. We did talk about the cameras, not only for law enforcement, but for also for the, the human traffic effort and stuff, so we'll see what happens. Alls we could do is just be respectful and be the respectful, squeaky wheel and talk to them to get what Grand Terrace needs. I know Conrad talked about highly about the infrastructure and the storm drainage for the Clean Water Act and stuff. So it was nice to meet her. And then I went to the Omni Meeting where the, the chair and the vice chair were supposed to be picked. Colton Mayor Frank Navarro, he's going to hold off for a little bit, so we kept the same chair and the vice chair until December. I waited for Councilmember Robles's meeting to get out, and she's in there for a long time, so she's definitely earned her money on the SBCTA and the SCAG, so. But sometimes I listen to those people like, oh, I got there at 11:00, I was told to be in the meeting, and my meeting didn't start till 12:30, and it took two minutes, so I don't. We voted on the mayor for Barstow for the, the, for the homeless committee, because each, there's certain areas for each mayor's to vote on it. So he's representing that. So that was a unique, and, and once again, that's, you know, I'd just like to thank everybody and once, and thank you for the volunteers again. And, you know, that's what makes Grand Terrace special, is all the volunteers. And on the trash over there by the cross, I know on our Community Days, might have to do that, but I remember picking up a lot of trash over there. There is, they like to do, I think if we put a trash can there, hopefully maybe they might put the trash in the trash, I don't know. But something we might want to look into. All right. So that's all I have. So City Manager Communication?
Well, not, not to pile on, but I do want to thank all of the volunteers for Community Day. And I do have to clear up a misconception. My entire contribution was to make sure the door between the conference room and my office was closed so that I wouldn't diminish what our volunteers did and actually gave them the free rein to do what they, they needed to do. So thank you to all of you. It was a huge success. With that, I think AJ took some video, if you guys don't mind watching a few minutes of a recap of what, what we did and saw. Thank you, AJ. Very well done. And then a couple of meetings ago, I asked for your forbearance on the paving and all the disruption we caused in the city. We're getting to the tail end of that. I want to thank the residents for putting up with everything we've, we've done. We have a couple of more weeks of striping and adjusting manholes and kind of doing that last punch list item. In the last 16 months, we have paved five miles of road, over a million square feet of asphalt, which is a pretty phenomenal accomplishment for any city, much less Grand Terrace. So we've done a big, a big piece, and it's a big start to eventually get ourselves onto a, a real paving schedule so that these, these streets that have been missed have been brought up. Year after year, we can get them onto a schedule and, and start doing, doing what we need to do. Because if we can't, if we can't get to the businesses, we can't get to the house, it really doesn't matter what we do with the rest of the city. And so we're, we're working on that infrastructure. And so I really want to thank the, the residents for putting up with that. Thank you.
Thank you. One other note on the paving. The, the director from the water company, we're going, we're partnering with them, the water company, to finish paving Michigan, and he said that's six months out because they're still doing the plan. So we didn't forget a part of Michigan, it's just because of the water company.
Correct. The water company is putting in a new water line down that section of Michigan that we haven't paved. So we thought we'd wait off and then we'll do that as, as the next phase. Also with the water company, as part of this paving, and it happens routinely in paving projects, we've had multiple leaks. So we go over, the equipment vibrates and shakes and, and things that were small leaks. We get big leaks, we've had several of those, and the water company's been really, really gracious with us on working and getting those leaks. And they're, you know, they're going to pay our contractor to get it back so that it looks, it doesn't look like there's street cuts all over the place. And they've been very, very good about working with us on it. So we appreciate working with them.
Okay. Well, thank you. So anything else? Okay, I guess we're done tonight. So in honor of tonight's meeting, we're going to close for Pat, what's the last name?
Henohosa.
Kenohosa?
Henohosa.
Henohosa. So we'll close it in her honor. All right. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight and speaking, and have a blessed week. And don't forget, June, what, 15th for the?
June 14th is Flag Day, June 19th is Juneteenth.
No, for the, their program is?
Oh, that's Wednesday? That's?
Wednesday from?
Tomorrow at 5:00 p.m. Yep.
Five to seven, right?
Smoke-free Grand Terrace, community room.
All right. Sounds like a plan. So thank you, everybody, and have a good night. God bless.